Do we have the award?
You know about this one.
Can we have a motion to adjourn closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tonight, let's have... Tonight, let's have Mrs. Gloria Macias Harrison, the San Bernardino Community College District Board Trustee and publisher of the Inland Empire News. Lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
If I stand behind the podium, you won't see me.
If you'll put your hand on your heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Macias Harrison. Usually, we have a live student performance right after the pledge, but it was minimum day today, leading into spring break, so the kids are all on spring break. We wish them and their families a safe and fun vacation. Give a round of applause. Do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes, we do, Professor Montes. So we have, the Board of Education accepted the resignation of certificated employee number 1775339, effective June 30th, 2019. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Brian Perkis, therapeutic behavioral therapist, special education. The roll call vote was unanimous. And the Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Dr. Ayana Ibrahim Balagan, elementary principal, Warner Elementary. The roll call vote was unanimous. And lastly, trustee Nina Walker recused herself from closed session, Agenda Item A4, because she is president and CEO of Blue Educational Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. That's all.
Would any of the new appointees like to shake hands with the board?
Before we do that, I will just give in one more. So in closed session, the Board of Education took action to notice employee number 1536339 and employee number 1051339 that they must be released from their administrative position and reassigned to another certificated administrative position, classroom, teaching position, or other non-management certificated position for the 2019-2020 school year, or that their work year and/or salary may be reduced for the 2019 school year. The roll call vote was unanimous.
Do you have any more?
No, sir.
All right. Okay.
Congratulations. Well deserved.
Congratulations.
Good congratulations.
Next, we go to adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we need to make any corrections or changes? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we go to B, presentations. Number item one is Warner Elementary School student, Destiny Hart, for the Bridge Builders Award.
Okay. Will Miss Destiny Hart, please come on up? Okay. Destiny Hart is a nine-year-old student at Warner Elementary School, home of the stars. Just a couple of months ago, this amazing young lady was put to the test to do one of the most courageous acts that actually saved a life. According to her Warner teacher, Mrs. Rachel Garvin, is she here?
Yeah.
Oh, come on in. On the weekend honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, Destiny channeled that great man's bravery and sprang to action when she heard a noise and realized her father was in distress. Is your dad here? Okay. Destiny's father was having a heart attack and told her to call 911. She was cool, calm, and collected as she gave the 911 dispatchers vital information. Knowing that her mom needed sleep after a week of commuting to LA for work, she waited until EMS officials were at the front door before waking her. According to Mrs. Garvin, Destiny's story has been shared with her classmates and has led to classroom visits from the Rialto Fire Captain, dispatchers, EMTs, and Rialto Police. Mrs. Garvin added, "Her classroom family is very proud of her, and we have all learned the importance of remaining calm in an emergency, knowing your address and being brave." The youngest child of parents Barbara Coller and Carl Hart likes Shopkins Pizza and is excited about going to Disneyland this weekend. In school, her favorite subjects are math and science. In a reflective project, she described herself as being kind, intelligent, incredible, and hardworking. We couldn't agree more. Tonight, Destiny, we honor you. At such a young age, you displayed great signs of leadership. You were not... You did not show drama. A lesson for us all to learn. You saw that your father needed assistance, and you calmly jumped into action. The best part of it, you weren't expecting anything in return. For following your father's direction and for being conscientious in observing that your mother was, after all, tired, you became the leader in your family and went into crisis mode. Quite a hero. We appreciate you. We wish your father's health returns quickly, and we are very proud that you are one of our students. Please accept a certificate of recognition from the Board of Education for your bravery, and congratulations, Destiny. This is your Bridge Builder Award, and it says, "Excellence in bravery, strength, and quick action during adversity." You did a very brave thing. Most adults couldn't do what you did and stay calm. So, congratulations. Why didn't you come around here?
We can get a picture with her?
I'll say something on Destiny's behalf, because she is a little shy. But Destiny has been able to meet with the fire captain from Rialto Fire. They actually issued her a challenge coin. It's the same thing that the firemen carry in their pockets to remind them to be brave and calm in emergency situations. So the dispatchers came to our classroom after listening to the tapes and could not believe how collected she was in the event itself. So it was pretty amazing that we've got to experience a lot of this and see the examples she set for our students and our entire classroom family. So we're very, very proud of her.
And as...
Our librarian, we want to see her face as well.
She's Destiny invited.
And as part of our recognition as superintendent, I am going to present the team from Warner with a district pin that includes our logo, "Bridge in Futures Through Innovation." And for Destiny, I have two, a silver and a gold, so that she can proudly display it whenever she likes.
And Destiny, you gave us a big smile the one you gave me. Not me. There you go. There you go. Beautiful smile. I'll make sure that that gets to Mr. Hart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Next, we go to Item B2, California School Boards Association Golden Quill Journalism Award for Mrs. Mary Joy Duncan, Rialto Record Newspaper Educational Reporter.
First of all, I want to show the community this. It reads, "CSBA Golden Quill 2018 Awards: Certificate of Excellence in Journalism." I'll continue when Mary Joy is here. Please join me. My goodness. Can require both of your arms. Okay. The historic journalist, Joseph Pewitzer, said, "We are a democracy, and there is only one way to get a democracy on its feet, in the matter of its individual, its social, its municipal, its state, its national conduct, and that is by keeping the public informed about what is going on." In the spirit of keeping the community informed, the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education congratulates Mary Joy Duncan, Managing Editor, for our local newspaper, The Rialto Record, for earning California School Board Associations' CSBA Golden Quill Journalism Award. The district is grateful to have this consummate journalist, professional, be recognized for her tireless work. State at Saeta Joffrey, agent of Communications Media Services. Mrs. Duncan approaches her reporting with integrity and a kind-hearted focus for her subjects. True to community journalism format, her positive values are always featured through her style of writing. Her articles emphasize Rialto Unified School District educational achievements, which create much joy in the lives of our students, staff members, parents, board members. And the free press is a fundamental core piece of democracy in America. Presently, reporters in the profession of journalism are under tremendous scrutiny. So it is refreshing to observe reputable state educational agencies, such as CSBA, championing the work of those in this credible profession. School District and County Boards of Education nominate journalists for the Golden Quill Award, identifying stories where the nominee demonstrated a holistic understanding of the local educational agency and its stakeholders. Nominees must also have developed relationships with relevant district and site-level staff in addition to understanding the district or county office of education's missions, goals, and/or strategic vision during the reporting process. Journalists who accurately and fairly explore the issues that districts and county offices of education face performing an essential public service by providing meaningful insight into public schools. "One of our county's core civic institutions," said CSBA President Mike Walsh. "The Golden Quill Awards" "celebrate strong reporting that informs audiences and illuminates critical issues facing" "local schools and California's 6.2 million" "public school students." Before we thank Mary Joy and the publisher for The Rialto Record, Mrs. Macias Harrison, would you like to join us? For partnering with our district in earning this prestigious state recognition, let me share some information about Mrs. Duncan, who first began working at the newspaper in 2014. Mrs. Duncan graduated from California State University, San Bernardino, with a Bachelor of Arts degree in English with a concentration in literature. Although an active mother, juggling her twins, being a guest teacher at her children's school in San Bernardino City, the Unified School District, Mrs. Duncan's professional responsibilities includes assigning, approving, and editing articles. Duties include writing, editing to ensure accuracy of content, formatting all pages of the paper with the exception of legal pages, and developing, maintaining connections with community stakeholders and regional, local lawmakers and officials. The Rialto Record has been in existence since the late 1800s. Throughout the budget woes of the 90s, I assume the 1990s, the financial issues of the 2000s and today, the Macias Harrison family has kept the success of the readership of the newspapers strong. On behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for being champions of the free press, and thank you for highlighting the wonderful things happening in our district. We appreciate your coverage. Okay, here's another... Here's the second one. Just a very beautiful. Okay. Golden Quill Award on March 13th, 2019, presented to Mary Joy Duncan, Inland Empire Community News Managing Editor. Excellence in earning the California School Boards Association Golden Quill Award through fair, insightful, and accurate education reporting of public schools' news by The Rialto Record Newspaper. Signed, President, Rialto Unified School District, Edgar Montez, and Dr. Quatimook Avila, Superintendent. So here's one. And here's the other one. CSBA Golden Quill 2018 Awards: Certificate of Excellence in Journalism. This certificate is proudly presented to Mary Joy Duncan, Rialto Record, Inland Empire Community News, in recognition of fair, insightful, and accurate reporting of public school news. I can't read the writing. Okay. And here's for your other one. And why don't we move in front? There's one more. Third one. Okay. This is also a Golden Quill Award, presented to Gloria Macias Harrison, Inland Empire Community News Publisher. Excellence in earning the California School Boards Association Golden Quill Award through fair, insightful, and accurate education publishing of public schools' news by The Rialto Record Newspaper.
Mary Joy did not want to speak tonight. She's a writer. The public relations is left up to me. And I want to thank you so much for the recognition of the fine work that Mary Joy does. We are a small company, a very local company. We started with another couple of publications called Alchicano about 50 years ago, which was an activist paper. And the core reason that we established that paper was because we did not like the depiction of our communities in the press and in television. And so we wanted to make sure that the good news and that when we took a snapshot, because a story is nothing more than a snapshot of the community at a certain time. And there are good stories, excellent stories coming from our communities. It's not all bad guys. There is some wonderful stuff happening. And of course, you have to understand that the majority of the people who organized that original committee were almost all educators. We are all teachers. We have had careers. That's the only way we could sustain ourselves while we were doing this hobby, right? And it became more than that. And eventually, we bought The Colton Courier and we bought The Rialto Record, both longstanding community press. And there is nothing that is as important to a community than to have their own press, to have their stories out there, to have their children in that paper. Now, we always talk about, we publish a lot of Birds on the Fence. Birds on the Fence is a lineup, like we did right now, right? With all of the people. And people want to see their children. They want to see their families. They want to see their neighbors. They want to see the people they do business with on a daily basis. They want to see them in the paper, and they want to know about them. There certainly is a lot of negative stuff out there we could be reporting on, but that's not our purpose. Our purpose is to uplift our community. And our own personal core value is we do no harm. At least, we try not to. Every once in a while, yeah, we take a little poke at somebody when we think they have not looked at an issue well enough. But on the whole, on the whole, we want to reflect the very best. And what is the very best of any community? Our children. That's the very best. Anyway, thank you so much, and thank you for recognizing somebody who works very hard. I mean, I put in some time, but not like she does, not like she does and the other staffers. So, thank you again.
And I do apologize to the board and the audience, but I will be checking out. So, this is going to go over to the Vice President for the rest of the meeting.
Should I move to your chair?
You.
You're more than welcome to, if you'd like.
Doesn't matter, but...
I would prefer that you do, and I'm going to switch this.
No problem. Okay. We're going to move on now with public comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. And we have three, it looks like. Rhonda Savage, would you come up to the podium and...
Hi, good evening. My name is Rhonda Savage. I'm currently a teacher at Myler High School and at Rialto Adult Education. I am providing education in the health pathway that we started a couple of years back. I brought along with me somebody that I want to brag about. This is Stephanie Gonzalez. Stephanie Gonzalez is recently finished the pharmacy pathway at Myler High School. She also just graduated at Myler High School in the last month and then transitioned over to the Adult Education Pharmacy Technician Program. She started that program a little bit behind because the other students started in August. So she started in January, where her education has just excelled with her experience. Currently, she is finishing up an internship with one of our local pharmacies here in Rialto, North Rialto Drug. She was committed to 120 volunteer hours. Because she's 17, we weren't allowed to put her on a regular internship. At this point, she finished last week, I think, on last Thursday. And at that point in time, they offered her a part-time position while she's continuing her education in the pharmacy technician program. In May, she will complete the program. She will take her state board exam and be able to get licensed as a pharmacy technician to work out in the field as soon as she turns 18. But I'm here to share that with you because I wanted to let you guys know that pathways are working. We are putting students out there. They're getting education. They're getting experience. And this is part of the experience that I want to share with you. And I want to let you guys know she's doing so very well that I'm proud of her for us to have the opportunity from the high schools, the support from Mr. Luna, Ms. Quaylar, Ms. Watson from our adult education, and Mr. D'Souza. So this is Stephanie Gonzalez. I want to congratulate her on her success. I want to congratulate her on her success. She's acting shy. But I just wanted to bring to your attention that our pathways are working. We're out there working hard to get these students out there. And they're the ones that are doing all the work. They're the ones that are showing us that it can be done. And we should be proud of them as administrators and so forth, that our kids are actually stepping up, not our kids, but almost adults, are stepping up and working really hard to finish as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us. Michael Montano?
Good evening. Before I share the concern, I would just like to share that I had the opportunity to attend the Black History Celebration that Bemis had. And I had the greatest pleasure, I should say, not pleasure, but privilege to listen to our own Dr. McDuffie deliver Martin Luther King's The Drum Major Instinct. And it really touched me. And the words spoke volume that I actually had to felt compelled to go back into the classroom and share that with my students and give a little assignment. So again, thank you, Dr. McDuffie. And hopefully, he can share that again sometime in the future. It's amazing. So, thank you. And again, it was a privilege. The concern that I want to share, several staff members, teachers, brought up concern and asked me to speak to our school site council on the matter. And that was with the fire extinguishers in the classrooms. Every year, they get serviced, and they disappear. They may send out an email letting us know ahead of time, but, you know, it gets forgotten. And then they're gone for a week and a half, two weeks, maybe three weeks. And that's every fire extinguisher in the building. And I didn't take the time to do the legwork to find out if it's happening to all the buildings at once. So I shared that information at the school site council along with some recommendations by the teachers. So I'll share those with you. Well, before I begin with the recommendations, at the school site council meeting, our principal shared with us that when it came to that matter, that we were at the mercy of the district. So I'm here coming to the district to see if maybe something can be done with the concern that if it is happening at our school, there's a good chance it could be happening at some of the other sites, if not every sites. So again, I don't know if it's the one building at a time or if it's the whole school, but every fire extinguisher from the building is removed. So if there's a fire, there's no fire extinguisher for maybe three weeks at a time. So some of the suggestions by some of the teachers were to maybe do every other room. That was one suggestion. Another one was just do one side of the hallway at a time. Another one was at least leave one fire extinguisher in the hallway of the building so that everybody knew, would know where it's at. And then one that came up after I went to the school site council was that if it is building by building, then maybe have an extra set of fire extinguishers that they could just simply be swapped out. Because that, three weeks at a time, that's, you know, it's like car insurance. We don't randomly, "Well, I don't think I'm going to have an accident this week, so I'm, you know, not paid for these two months or whatever." So again, enough staff members asked me to speak. So here I am with that concern, and hopefully, something can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Wilson?
Hello, I'm here regarding a concern with Frisbee Middle School. Right now, currently, you have Dr. Roland as the principal. And we have Dr. Murray, who's in charge of sixth grade for certain classes. I voiced a concern with the school in regards to Dr. Murray calling the "the mental" and telling them how stupid they are. My daughter is currently a sixth grader there in this classroom. And when she originally left from Bemis Elementary to there, my daughter has never had a behavior problem. She's always been helping. I can show you, like, awards going so forth. However, I wanted to indicate, how can we discipline the students for this type of behavior, but is administrated from the staff who administers the behavior for the things that she say? And she think that there's no regards. My daughter is home with me. I don't distribute that behavior nor the language that she gives. So how do you guys accept someone who's on your payroll to do that? And not to mention, she has a doctorate's degree. So I know that she has to take some form of psychology class to where, why wouldn't she believe that that can have a mental abuse on a kid growing up? Especially when she's in control of a sixth grade class. Sixth grade is the beginning to going to high school and college. So therefore, if she tear them down now, we don't know what kind of effect that'd have on our kids. My daughter just recently got in a fight. And I just went to the Willow thing at 3:00 today, which had no, nothing in reference to Dr. Murray. But I noticed that they gave my daughter mental, what they consider it, anger management classes, that she ought to go to the probation over there off of Gilbert. And I'm like, "Well, what's the difference? If someone come up and hit my daughter, and everyone knows that she just was picked on, and also it's a kid in the classroom that picks on all the kids. Nothing's happening to him, but just for one fight when she was defending herself, y'all want me to put my kid in anger management class for three weeks, two times a week, Monday and Wednesday after school? But the teacher can stay employed and continue on with life like it's just great? And you're tearing kids down when you're supposed to be empowering them for a brighter future?" So I just wanted to know, someone needs to look into that because that's not adequate for a person of power to be telling these kids that, especially when you're not their parent. And it's not even okay for a parent because technically, if CPS came out to your home, you would get in trouble for it. So why this teacher is not in trouble?
Thank you for letting us know that. And Dr. Avila, can we have staff look into that and see what the situation is?
Yes, it's been brought to our attention, and staff has taken the first steps to address that.
Okay, we now move on to public comments on agenda items. And I don't have any in front of me, so I don't know.
We have none.
So we'll move on. Comments from association executive board members. Do we have a representative here from REA, Rialto Education Association? Probably not, because they're all on vacation this week, right? Do we have a representative here from CSEA, the California School Employees Association? There he is.
Good evening, Rialto Unified Family. Just wanted to talk a little bit tonight about... Well, first, I want to thank the board for approving the SERP. This is going to be an interesting, we honor our own this year. Definitely have a big list. As such, I just wanted to convey that we're looking forward to working with the district in getting new people in these positions and looking forward to the opportunity to use it to grow and help our district. I also want to do a little bragging tonight. On March 2nd, I attended a union training with my treasurer. We were there with all of the presidents and treasurers from the area, the San Bernardino County area. And our state president attended. And in Rialto, our percentage of non-members went from 8% to 2%. And we're actually number one in the county.
Oh, congratulations.
That's pretty much it for this evening. We'll look forward to seeing you all at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Representative from Communication Workers of America?
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I don't really have anything to actually bring to the board this evening. We did bring a part of a re-opener last week. Yeah, last week. So I don't really have anything else. I've, you know, we're just here to listen and see what results are.
Okay, thank you. And Rialto School Managers Association. Ah, there she is.
Good evening. Mrs. O'Kelly and our board, Dr. Avila and the Innovation Team. I'm Angela Brantley, Lead Student Services Agent. But I'm here in the capacity of the VP for Legislative Action for Rialto School Managers Association and the VP of Membership for the Association of California School Administrators, Region 12. And tonight, I'd like to take an opportunity to congratulate two of our Rialto administrators, who are also RSMA members. Ms. Melissa Rubio, our PBIS coordinator. She will be honored as the Valuing Diversity Administrator of the Year. And Mr. Andres Luna, who will be honored as the Continuing Education Administrator of the Year. So the two of them will be recognized April 15th at the DoubleTree Hotel in October at the Official Administrator of the Year event for Act of Region 12. And we'd just love for you to be there to support. In addition to that, as we approach the fourth quarter of the school year, RSMA issues scholarships for our seniors here in Rialto for our four comprehensive, or three comprehensive high schools and one continuation high school. We're looking forward to working with our career counselors to make sure that we honor students with scholarships. And then if you are an RSMA member and you have a graduating senior, this is going to be our second year actually offering scholarships to our own members who have their own personal students who are seniors. So if you're a member, please be on the lookout for those, the email that'll come out. We're going to be giving away two scholarships in that capacity, too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward, we now have comments from the superintendent.
Thank you, Vice President O'Kelly. And just want to again congratulate Mary Joy Duncan and Gloria Macia Harrison for choosing to promote the positive in the community. While they have the option to promote whatever they choose to, they have chosen to do what I believe is the right thing to inundate our community with the positivity that it does have. And also, another congratulations to Destiny Hart for the heroism that she showed during that emergency that she experienced in the middle of the night. I did have an opportunity to visit a number of schools for Read Across America and had the joy of reading to kids in grades 2 through 4th grade on March 1st. But it was on the day before that I had been invited to Boyd Elementary School, Mrs. Jacqueline Augustos' class. It's a dual-language emergent class. So I had quite the ball with that kindergarten class. And while I've always advocated that my dream in this district is to make every classroom a kindergarten classroom, because of all the energy, the spirit, the curiosity, the inquiry, the happiness, the creativity that takes place in a kindergarten classroom really should take place in every classroom. And even though we encourage our kids to be inquisitive, I know that many of us with a five-year-old lose our patience when we hear "why" to everything that we state. But that's part of growing up, and that shows that curiosity. They want to know. They're curious about what they're being asked to do and what they're not being asked to do. So I was having a great time. And then I realized that throughout the story, if you ask one kindergarten, if you ask the kindergarten class one question, you're going to get 25 different responses because after one kid responds, every kid has to say what he or she needs to say. And the answers will vary. And oftentimes, they start talking about things that have nothing to do with the question. They tell you things that they probably shouldn't be sharing. And so I did have what I thought was the longest 30 seconds of my life. Because for a minute, I felt that the teacher had kind of set me up because while the kids were going at it, I was looking around. I was looking at the teacher. I was looking at the paraprofessional for some help. And they just sat there and kind of allowed me to experience what I think they saw as what they experience every day. So they wanted me to get a taste of what they go through with a kindergarten class. But I had a blast interacting with kindergarten students. This morning, I had the pleasure of visiting Frisbee Middle School. They had their annual Career Day. And I've been there the last two, three years consecutively. And it gets better, bigger, and better every year. We had an amazing group of representatives across all professions, industry. But the thing that really impressed me the most was the students. We had ambassadors that were there to guide and escort our guests to one class and to another, from one class to another. And while I'm proud to say this, it hurts me to have to say this, that our kids outdress the majority of adults. I mean, they really showed character. They showed class. They showed presence. And so I'm very proud of our ambassadors at Frisbee Middle School for taking the opportunity to showcase the qualities that they have here in our district. And while I was doing that, Dr. McDuffie was at Coco's Restaurant. But he was there for the Kiwanis Club Student of the Month. So congratulations to Eisenhower High School Students of the Month, Hasel Cervantes and Jim Solomon. Carter High School Student of the Month, Sarah Alvarado and Victor Murrieta. And this evening, and I apologize for not having the name, but this evening, we attended, or I attended, along with others here from the district office, Carter High School's Distinguished Scholars Ceremony, which honors all the students that have had a 4.0 or higher during their high school career. The number of students has grown from 35 two years ago to 55, which shows the expectations, that when we set expectation for kids, they rise to the occasion. But more impressively was the valedictorian, and that's the name that I don't have in front of me. But she was able to reach a 4.8 GPA, taking six AP courses her senior year and establishing the highest GPA in the school history. So congratulations. I'll be sure to remember the name and reach out to her.
Chelsea Guzman.
Chelsea Guzman.
Arenas.
Arenas, that's the name. Congratulations for setting a standard for others to have to follow. And that's all.
Okay, and now we're going to move on with comments from members of the Board of Education. And let's start with Board Member Ayala.
Thank you, President O'Kelly. I'll continue where we left off last board meeting. And we were talking about major challenges facing public schools. We elaborated a little bit about some of those challenges. And also, Mr. Martinez was giving us a little report, if you don't mind me sharing, about the changing of careers and how challenging it's going to be for our kids. It's a different world. Because not only do they have to keep evolving and changing, they're competing against robots, technology, and they're competing against a world. Okay, so what, you know, here in Rialto, it's okay to risk at our district. We risk. We think a little bit out of the box. And I'll bring Saeda into this conversation, too, wherever she's at. Last time I brought this topic up, she was a little confused. She said I was kind of wandering a little bit. And at the risk of wandering again, let's bring this topic again. Education doesn't work. Here she comes. Education doesn't work for everybody, okay? There are people out there who are 4.0s, and they still can't find a job. They have degrees. They can't find a job. Here, I guess there's other places they could go, okay? So let's just look at a typical job that you find in these cookie-cutter communities. Let's just use the figure $10 an hour times 40-hour week times four weeks. That's $1,600. The average rent, just to rent a place, two-bedroom, nothing house is $1,400 a month. So there's an equation there. It's not balancing. But remember, we're talking about the kids where education isn't working for them, okay? And I think we have an obligation to assist them in helping them find their path. This is a bigger problem than Rialto can solve by themselves. But with this platform, we can share information. And maybe somebody's watching. Somebody will bring it up. They'll say, "Hey, I heard some board member, I heard this at a school district." And then it just continues. The conversations continue. The key, the key is water, water. We bring water down from other communities, okay? And we bring them to these desert communities. And what do you do with it? Well, look what Las Vegas did. Well, look what Las Vegas did. Look what Palm Springs did with the water, okay? Now, we're trying to balance the equation. We're trying to lower expenses for our kids, give them alternatives. While they're here at our school, we could prepare them for the future, for those kids who want a little insurance, maybe that they're not going to be a doctor, or they're not going to end up in the NBA. So they can find other ways to make that $10 work for them, and they don't have to move Now, what does water have to do with it? Well, if you have water in communities, okay, now you can do things with that water. You can generate electricity, you need it for a living. And if you have homesteading, which we had in this country years ago, you could bring it back. Our kids could build their own dwellings, which is one of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. You can teach them how to cultivate and supplement their food. Here's the water again. But it's not going to happen if you don't start thinking now and we're not proactive, and we don't think together. We have to lobby somebody and continue these discussions. Or we can just say, our kids are going to be fine. Well, I have grandkids, too, 10 of them, and I worry about them. I'll do my best to take care of them, but we also have 28,000 kids, more or less, that we have to get ready for their future. Okay, so somebody might say, well, that's going to be too difficult to get water to our community. I'll just remind you, then how difficult was it to get oil from Alaska? When there's a will, there's a way. And I'll remind everybody that probably 77% of the water in the Sacramento Delta goes right out to the ocean, when it could be channeled in peripherals and brought down here. But that's a political arena, and we got to start somewhere. So I just wanted to stir the pot a little bit, think a little bit out of the box, get us thinking, how can we take care of our kids who maybe education isn't working for? Thank you so much for allowing me to give you my two cents tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Board Member, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, I found this, I haven't prepared for tonight, but this is an older one, and it's almost like you were reading my mail here. So, okay, "Rethinking Higher Education." Positive changes have begun to take hold in higher education on a small scale, leading to better outcomes for students and thus for the economy at large. If ideas like these could take broader hold over the coming years, higher education could become more effective for students, educators, and employers. Item 1, Condensing the Academic Experience. The traditional four-year degree is widely considered the standard requirement for career success, but in a wide range of fields, four years of higher education is superfluous. More focused, affordable, and practical alternatives should be encouraged. About 60% of full-time college students fail to complete their degrees in four years. Adult ed should provide remedial math and English so as to keep education at low cost. At its heart, a technical training that could be completed in two years rather than three, doing away with focus on credentials, this one's going to be real controversial. If less emphasis were placed by schools and employers on paper credentials that do little to affect actual job preparedness, job seekers would be encouraged to improve their qualifications in other ways, such as through online courses, credential certificate programs, self-teaching, and entrepreneurship. With locations in Paris and San Francisco, 42, the number 42, is a complete redesign of higher education. Not only are there no credentials offered, but the engineering school also doesn't have professors or classes. Students take charge of their own education and have their projects graded by their peers. Forging Stronger Ties Between Industry and Education. When institutes of higher learning partner with industry, everyone benefits. Students get increased access to mentors and internships, schools improve the relevancy of their curriculum, and companies get the first pick of rising talent. Implementing Project-Based Learning. Modern careers require creativity, critical thinking, interpersonal skills, writing ability, presentation skills, and negotiation. Crafting and presenting a reasonable argument, asking the right questions, and seeking out the answers. These are the skills that must be taught in combination with any sort of technical education. One way to integrate these real-world skills into the classroom is through project-based learning. By having students plan, design, and execute their own projects, they learn to function as they will in ever-evolving job market. Based in San Francisco, Make School is a first of its kind. Two-year bachelor's degree in applied computer science. Students are treated like junior developers and engage in project-based learning with a curriculum that blends liberal arts, computer science, and character development. So there are many other ways to consider, but we are so set in our way.
I know.
So we do need to consider alternatives, my brother.
And we didn't call each other.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Madam Chair.
Okay. Board Clerk, Ms. Deanna Walker.
I feel like I'm going to go, like, they just attacked my whole livelihood.
No, no, no.
Talking about, no, I'm joking, but I mean, you know, I'm like, I'm such a proponent of higher education, post-secondary education. So it doesn't mean necessarily mean that about getting a four-year degree, but it does mean that after high school, we should be getting some kind of education, learning, trade, whatever that piece is. Right. So.
Madam President, can I say something? Because it's important.
Okay.
It's always a good idea to start a meeting with, it's okay to disagree.
Yes, yes, yes. Oh, yeah, yeah. No worries.
If everybody agreed, we'd be in trouble.
If everybody agreed with me, we'd all have degrees, right? So we know there's a school of thought that's totally different. Anyway, I say that all to say, because we are an institution of education, and so when people say things like, you know, "education is not for me," or things of that sort, it's not necessarily that educationism for them. I think the system in which they are in doesn't work for them. And so for us as educators and administrators and overseers and decision-makers, that we have to make that very clear to families and students, that it may not just be working for you in the system you are in. But there is always something that we can learn, whatever we do. Dr. Avalot talked about the five-year-olds being in the class and them asking, why, 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 why? That's a process of learning. And so in every place, in every situation, we learn all the time. So I just, you know, that whole concept of educationism for me, even when my high schoolers say that stuff to me, I'm like, what? You know? This situation just may not be for you. But it's up to us as adults to be able to guide and open fields up so that young people understand and know that there are other ways and other opportunities. And it just may, and sometimes it's just about maturity as well. They just may not be ready to receive what their, you know, their environment. So for me, as a board member, for me as an educational advocate and as a proponent for post-secondary ed, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that there is always, everybody's college material, it just means what college? Always understand that. Whether you want to be an electrician or, you know, electrical engineer, you can start off at Valley College right down the street, and that means that is a skilled trade, or you can be highfalutin with a master's or whatever degree that you want to do in engineering. But it all starts with something that happens after high school. Because even if you go into trade, you need somebody to teach you, teach you, you've got to be educated on what you're doing. So with that said, March 1st, for those of you who may believe, if you're around young people or have decided or are thinking about going back to school for yourself, March 1st was not the last deadline to apply for financial aid, so that's just a priority deadline. You still have a whole nother, almost year to apply for financial aid, to go to school anywhere you want in the United States. So please make sure you're spreading that word to your families, your friends, or people that are still living on your couch and you want them to do something different. You know? So, financial aid, the applications are still open. For anybody that you know who is, has young people or whatever who have applied to UCs, they're starting to make decisions now. So make sure you tell your young people to look at their emails and check their portals because they don't want to miss making sure they reply back to their schools for their decisions. And lastly, I just want to thank everybody who supported not only our local paper here because without the press, and our local press being able to tell our own stories and our narrative, we would be lost amongst this media, this big media machine that we have in the United States. So again, thank you for whoever submitted their, to CSBA, for them to be nominated for that award and to receive it. And then again, just to make sure that we know that we still have to tell our own stories. And so whether that's the story of how important education is, on what level, on what career you take on, or the important stories about little girls saving their fathers' lives, that we have to still be able to tell our stories. And I'm just glad that we're doing those things here in Rialto. Thank you.
And I had a couple of things to share tonight. First of all, I was very excited to serve again, I've done this for about the past four years, as a panel member for the Student Advisory Panels, which are sponsored by the County Office of Education. I have done this for the past few years, and it's a day I truly look forward to every year. What happens is students from high schools all over San Bernardino County, those who are interested in participating in this, sign up, they meet for, I think it's four or five days over a period of about six weeks, creating and refining the presentations to elected officials who are invited to sit as panel members and hear them. And they mix up the high schools. So one team may have high schools from, you know, all over San Bernardino County. They don't put, you know, Rialto kids with Rialto kids necessarily. They try to mix them up so they have the experience of working outside of their known habitat. Anyway, it always amazes me every year, we have four countywide community vital signs, and in the County Community Vital Signs Transformation Plan, the four are described as education, economy, health and wellness, and safety. So the kids are given those four topics, and they are to choose one of them and an area in one of those areas that they want to do a presentation about, discuss the causes, the solutions, and whatever. One of the things that stood out this year, all the, every presentation is absolutely, they are thoughtful, they are insightful, and logical, and it makes me feel good to go to them. But one of the issues that came up that troubled me a little bit is the issue of safety in the schools. And it came out that most of these high school students from all over San Bernardino County don't feel necessarily safe at school, and they feel that we don't do anything to prepare for disaster preparedness. We do our once-a-year earthquake drill, you know? But really, they're more interested in meaningful preparation should something happen at school. And they went into several other areas of safety and discussed possible things we could do about those. One of the things was just at the beginning of each semester, teachers doing a safety reminder check, like have a list of things to remind students of so that they don't forget, like where this is, where that is, what do you do here? And just take, you know, five, 10 minutes out of class and do that. We can't constantly dwell on safety and not dwell on the curriculum, too. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. But I agreed with them, and I know we do what's required of us, but I would like to see, here in Rialto, I'd like to see us doing more in the area of disaster preparedness and safety with our students at every age group. So I thought that was very insightful of the kids, that they pointed out those things. I also was excited to attend the National School Breakfast Week Celebration held by Nutrition Services at the Bistro on March 5th. It was sponsored by the No Kid Hungry Campaign, which is working hard to end childhood hunger. We had some tasty treats created by Chef Travis Flood and the Rialto High School Culinary Club. And it was amazing turnout of teachers and classified staff, just district employees in general. The room was packed at the Bistro. It was very well done, great presentation. We honored our breakfast, our school breakfast hero nominees were honored, and of course, Dr. Monte Stewart at Hugh Banks Elementary was our school breakfast hero winner. But anyway, it was a wonderful event, and we are so proud of the impact our Nutrition Services Department has made in the area of childhood hunger. I see some of them back there. You want to stand up and say hi to everybody? Sarah's standing. And I'd want to congratulate Carter High School Speech and Debate Team, who are moving on to the state championships, which is awesome, Go Lions! And of course, congratulations to Eisenhower's Ike Choirs for placing first yet again. Ms. Chamberlain has won more trophies, she must not have any room for them anymore at the school. But they won first place in showmanship, and if you've ever seen the Ike Choirs, they are a show band. And Stephanie Chamberlain is their choir director, and, well, I was part of the decision to hire her, and that is one of the best decisions I have ever made. Thank you. That's all for tonight.
Can I say just one thing? Sure. So just on Ms. Chamberlain, we had some people working with some of the young people at Eisenhower to help them with their college stuff, and they came back and said, Ms. Walker, we can't, we can't work with those kids. And we're like, why? She said, because they have choir, and that choir lady will not let them, not let them go. And I said, well, I can understand that. I said, have you ever seen, and I asked them, have you ever seen the choir perform? And they're like, no. I said, wait, when they have their opening, you need to go see them because it is, it is really one of our jewels for our district, the excellence, the dedication, the accountability that she gives, you know, that she makes those young people have. So it's, you know, you know, I really, I think that if there are opportunities for people to really kind of get that, you know, I don't know, I think the dedication, everything, you know, and everything, and the discipline that she has for them and their commitment, you see it within that choir. So I'm just excited about what's happening there, and can't wait for the grand opening so they have their new, their new space.
Well, I was just going to point out, they have had to perform usually at Carter High School. Because her crowd, that's our biggest theater, and her crowds are so big, it's the only place that can hold them. And she has a Christmas concert every year and then a spring concert. And this year, for the first time, her spring concert will be able to be right on Eisenhower's campus in our brand-new Performing Arts Center. So we are very excited about that. But they are something to see. If you have never gone to see them, you are missing out. I go to every concert she has because it's just great entertainment and talent. Okay.
Thank you for the hire.
All right, we're going to move on with public hearing. Do I have a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and it says, "Public Hearing pursuant to the requirements of Government Code and Board Policy, the initial 2019-2020 proposals submitted by the Rialto Unified School District for an agreement between the Rialto Education Association, REA, and the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice." It says vote, but I don't know why we're voting on it, but let's vote on it anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hold on, I do have a question.
Uh-huh.
Okay, I want to pull it because on D 2.2, 50 days per year, or consecutive or not consecutive, it said, let's see here.
The way it's worded, in an academic year, I would say it's non, it doesn't have to be consecutive. It's just 50 days in a year.
Okay, I just wanted clarification for that. I'm good.
Okay, all right. Okay, do I have a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, number two, public hearing pursuant to the requirements of Government Code and Board board policy, the initial contract proposal for the 2019-2020 school year submitted by the Communication Workers of America, CWA, for an agreement between the Communication Workers of America, CWA, and the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice." All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or the superintendent for individual action. Do I have a motion to approve consent calendar items reference E through J?
Ms. O'Kelly, I would like to pull item G4 for individual action.
Okay, G4. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, all items except G4?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now the poll. Dr. Avila?
Yes, so we do have one of the principals, Principal Alberto Gutierrez from Myers Elementary School. And one of the questions that has come up was the number of chaperones. And so just wanted to get some clarification before the board takes action on it.
Alberto, yeah, Alberto Partezo-Gutierrez. So yes, questions? Your question, I'm sorry?
The, just the number of chaperones for the number of kids who are attending.
So both of our scholars, our teams were eligible to go based on our placement in the group competition. So from my school, what we're doing, we're taking eight of our female scholars and two of our male scholars. So two of our coaches are females, coaches that will be going, and they'll each be sharing rooms with four of their scholars, and I'll be sharing, you know, chaperoning the males. So that'll be a total of three from my school.
For my school, for Trap Elementary, we have a total of eight students, six of them being boys and two girls. So we need at least two male chaperones and one female chaperone.
I'm the one who submitted the question, and I'm okay because I understand, but I really needed to know whether they were actually just chaperones or coaches listed separately than chaperones. That gets around the board policy is why.
Okay, so I have to say that at least for Trap, the two chaperones that we have going, both are coaches, so they're both teachers. And then we also have Mr. Cuevas, who is Artosa, who also will be accompanying the group.
Okay, just clarification.
And the same for mine, the two female chaperones are also teachers and coaches, and I will be joining them as a male chaperone for our male scholars.
And congratulations on this. I'm so proud of the board.
Thank you, and we do have some of our scholars here that were part of the team as well.
Oh, let's see, can we have these scholars stand up?
We have Steve Sanchez-Fuentes, Aubriana Hernandez, Riley Barbosa, and Ms. Emily Truitt.
Congratulations, you guys are doing awesome work.
And Vice President O'Kelly, just for clarification, it's Alberto Camarena and Berenice Gutierrez. I mixed the two because I was thinking Trap and Myers.
Well, I knew who they were.
I called him Alberto Gutierrez. My apologies.
Okay, any other questions on this item? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the discussion because what you guys, ladies and gentlemen, were sharing earlier with our scholars, you know, you mentioned something as far as they have to design, produce, and implement, that absolutely covers what they are doing there. So, yes, absolutely, so thank you.
Okay. All right. So can I have a motion to approve G4?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're on discussion action items. And part of that approval that we just did was the SERP. Did you see the list of names in the agenda? How many people took it altogether? Do you remember?
Mohammed, how many?
173.
Yes. It was, "We honor our own" is going to be something this year.
Yes, it is.
I think I'll just go barefoot. Okay, number one, under discussion action. Approve the fiscal year 2018-2019 second interim financial report with a positive certification as the district will meet its obligations in the current and subsequent two fiscal years. Is there a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Okay, any kind of discussion on this item?
Thank you for a positive certification again.
Yes, thank you, Mohammed.
And crew.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two. Approve an agreement with Vavronik, Trine Day &amp; Company LLP, effective July 1, 2019, to perform the annual financial and performance audit of the Proposition 39 Measure Y General Obligation Bond Funds as required by law for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, with an option to renew for two additional years for fiscal years ending June 30, 2020 and June 30, 2021, at a cost not to exceed $8,000 per year, to be paid from Fund 21 Measure Y General Obligation Bond Funds. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Number three, approve the Board of Education meeting schedule for the 2019-2020 school year. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I don't think there's any discussion about this, but, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And approve the recommendations of the Administrative Hearing Panel, stipulated expulsions, case number 181944, 181943, 181941, and 181940. Don't know what happened to 42 there, but apparently he didn't make the list. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District will be held on Tuesday. If those of you who don't know, we had to move the meeting one day, so it won't be on a Wednesday next time. It will be on Tuesday, March 26, at 7:00 PM at the Dr. John Arkazalunas Education Center, 182 East Walnut Avenue, Rialto, California. Materials distributed or presented to the Board of Education at the board meeting are available upon request from the superintendent's office. Adjournment. Well, our student board member is on vacation, so she doesn't have to adjourn us, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's the time?
Okay, meeting is adjourned at 8:24.